Okay, I got the thumbs up that we are ready to go. We were having a little bit of an audio/video problem, so we got that worked out. So if you can, if you'd like to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will not have an indication tonight. I want to sign up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its name, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up on tonight's agenda is we have a presentation on the Bonner Springs Downtown Master Plan.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, Mark Lee, Community Development Director, Bonner Springs. This evening I have Chris Sanders with me from Lamar Johnson Collaborative. He's going to give you the final presentation on our Planning Sustainable Places Downtown Master Plan before you guys see it next month for adoption. It moves to the Planning Commission next week and everyone seems to be in agreeance, so it should pass and come to you guys. If you want this, plug a beer, Chris. We'll warn you, Chris likes to talk fast. If you have a question, probably raise your hand, maybe?
I'll try to be respectful of everyone's time.
Mark.
Slum down.
All right. Thanks for your time. Chris Sanders, landscape architect with Lamar Johnson Collaborative. We've been working with Mid-America Regional Council and the city over the last year or so to come up with this vision for the downtown Bonner Springs Master Plan. So we're going to take you through kind of the Cliff Notes version tonight. It's roughly 30 slides. There is a larger document that I believe has been shared with you all, so it's a little bit more robust than what you'll see, but this is an executive summary of sorts to take you through the process that we went through and ultimately how we arrived at our conclusions. So first, we'll talk a little bit about the team, the schedule, and the scope. We'll move through the design process from inventory and analysis all the way up to public engagement and ultimately the final vision plan, and then taking a look at kind of what's next, right? Which really boils down to funding and implementation, kind of how do we pay for it and then what comes first. So, team organization. The city of Bonner, obviously, at the top. Bonner Springs being the host here. Mid-America Regional Council and the stakeholder committees then worked very closely with our team, Lamar Johnson Collaborative. We had a mixed team of landscape architects and planners, both in our Kansas City office and our St. Louis office. And then we partnered with Trek Engineering from a civil and surveying perspective to understand some of the site constraints and some of the roadway challenges. Our project schedule, we kicked off last June. You see the June 30 kickoff meeting, and then we rolled into our discovery, inventory, and analysis and ideation phases over the next few months. At the turn of the year, we began our state, sorry, we began our really robust refinement process, which included our community engagement process. Now, several of you, we had the pleasure of chatting with at some of our pop-up events. We met with folks at the basketball games, we met at the library, community center, City Hall, and then ultimately the Chamber of Commerce lunch. In addition to that, we had an ongoing community survey online that collected responses through almost that entire period. So let's start at the beginning with the project's scope and goals. So these four goals came from the RFQ that was put out as part of the PSP project, that's Planning Sustainable Places. That's a program that's put on by Mid-America Regional Council to help communities fund planning efforts like this, to take a look at what could be in some of these community spaces. So the first is establish a plan for the riverfront park. This is an ongoing effort that's been looked at in Bonner Springs for many, many years. We had the good fortune of being able to kind of dig into some of the archives, if you will, and look at some pretty robust folders full of information that had been assembled by residents in the past. We needed to establish a plan that helps keep people downtown. That was really one of the main focuses of the project, to understand how we can get visitors and residents to come into the downtown and stay there. What are the infrastructural needs that might facilitate that? Funding strategies for implementation, both federal, state, and regional resources, so we'll talk about those at the end. And then ultimately, creating an identity in downtown that's vibrant and attractive to visitors. So what is it about Bonner Springs that really makes people want to come here, visit and stay, and enjoy your community? Here we go. So one of the first things we did was inventory. We spent a few days onsite, walking around town. We dug deeply into the GIS data, and we took a look at a robust kind of collection of information, right? This is what sets the foundation for the project and ultimately what we used to build the plan on. So some of the things that we looked at, context, what's going on in and around Bonner Springs, understanding the wards, the zoning, the age, what are the demographics? Who lives here? Who's coming here? Where's the population density? Where are those community centers where folks are living? And where are they trying to get to? Where are the destinations? Projected population growth, regional and local roadway infrastructure. Ultimately, though our plan is really focused more on a pedestrian perspective, we need to understand what's going on from a vehicular perspective so that we can understand how the two marry up. Local businesses, schools, and churches, again, those are those destinations where people are trying to get to, so how can we help facilitate that in a safe manner? And then ultimately, water risk. Any kind of riverfront project like this, you're going to want to take a look and understand what those risks for flooding are. The image on the right is actually an example of one of these inventory maps that are included in the overall master plan or vision plan. These water risk assessments are based on some of the FEMA maps to understand where the flood plain and the floodway exist. So you can see here that we're blessed, being on kind of the cut bank side of the river here. We don't have much of a flood plain to speak of that we're dealing with in the project area on the riverfront, but we do have a little bit of a floodway concern in some of those drainages that flow into the Kansas River there. So you'll see how we address that with our plan, kind of perching it up above those areas and bringing people down into the water in those zones. And if you're familiar, floodways are kind of the areas that you're not really too open to development. So during a flooding event, that's where the current will be, and so you want to keep infrastructure that goes above ground kind of out of those areas when possible. Things like telephone poles, light poles, things like that, right? You don't want to collect debris. Next step is analysis. What does all that stuff mean? Right? So we dug into all of the inventory that we did, and then take a look at site constraints, understanding where the challenges are, taking a look at opportunities for connections, both neighborhood connections, pedestrian connections, understanding walking distances. Is it feasible that somebody will actually walk to downtown from where some of the neighborhoods are? Parks and trailheads. If we're talking about pedestrian infrastructure, multimodal infrastructure, wheels and heels, if you will, it's important for us to understand where those recreational nodes are, right? Because people are likely going to run, ride their bike from park to park to park, things like that. Riverfront activation. What are the opportunities there? This is something that we heard over and over is really a major goal, but we needed to understand what the opportunities and constraints related to the riverfront were, and then ultimately downtown opportunities and constraints, right? So you have some very successful components to downtown, how can we build on those and make them a little better? Sorry. So during ideation, we really focused in on four key areas. First is trails, the downtown, Front Street, and then ultimately the riverfront park. We're going to talk about these in a slightly different order, just zooming in and out a little bit, but downtown. So you can start to see some of the labels here. This is one of our initial concept plans that we looked at for downtown. We'll start with the plan and then we'll talk about some of the inset graphics. So we identified opportunities for new sidewalks. We identified opportunities for pedestrian crossings. You know, as we start to think about community members that may live in some of the neighborhoods adjacent to the downtown commercial district, what is it like to walk down the street and actually enter downtown without a car, right? So if you're having a festival, if you want to go to the farmer's market, are you able to push a stroller? Are you able to move a wheelchair? Are you able to walk in a safe manner and enter and exit downtown? So we wanted to understand where those sidewalks are, how we might start to impact pedestrian crossings, excuse me, how we might start to engage with some of the existing businesses, the idea of a sidewalk cafes. It's something that became very popular during the COVID time period, if you will, and it's something that there's been some outreach to talk about, you know, how can we implement this in a more sustainable manner, right? Rather than having some kind of impromptu pop-up cafes. Is there a way to formalize that? Another thing we wanted to look at was a gateway, and a lot of the feedback that we got through this for these program elements came from our steering committee and stakeholder engagement process early on. So we're meeting with community leaders, we're meeting with members of the community, and understanding what some of these high-level goals and objectives are. Understanding Front Street, maybe right-sizing that so that folks feel a little bit more comfortable with that engagement, and then ultimately, last but not least, looking at how we can start to engage with the riverfront. So you see this idea of a new pedestrian bridge over the railroad and maybe potentially some sort of a promenade along the riverfront itself. So one of the things to understand is when we have railroad crossings, the current design guidelines from Union Pacific state that we're not promoting new at-grade crossings where they don't currently exist. So this one does not qualify as an existing crossing necessarily. During this early design iteration, we wanted to take a look at a way to take a step towards the railroad and understand what a grade-separated crossing, something that would adhere to their design guidelines, might look like, and that's what you're seeing here in these concept sketches. This is all big vision stuff that happened early on in the process, and we evolved the plan from here after we got community feedback and ultimately coordination with Union Pacific. Front Street, taking a look there, understanding what pavement is really necessary there. It's a very wide corridor. It services quite a bit of traffic with K-32 turning into Cedar there, and understanding what are the real implications of that. Do the existing curb lines need to stay fixed where they are, or is there opportunity for change there? Looking at improved circulation and crossings from a pedestrian's perspective, again, going back to that where people are and where they want to be, kind of using that as a guiding principle to help us understand how people want to move through this corridor. Looking at the Tree City USA, excuse me, Tree City USA, something that Bonner Springs is really proud of, and understanding how that feels as you move into the urban fabric. When you're crossing the K-7 Bridge and you look down onto Front Street, you know, could this tree canopy and some of these site furnishings and create a rhythm along that corridor that really invites people in? And then ultimately, opportunities for new trailheads and a gateway to downtown to bring people into the space. Next, we'll talk a little bit about trails. So we had, during the inventory and analysis phase, collected all of the existing trail projects that were in or that are in Bonner Springs. So what exists today, you can see that in the orange, and then what is planned for the future? So you can see that in some of the dotted lines, existing plans that are in place, you know, everything from trails along K-32 to trails internal to the community connecting the different trails or different parks. So then we wanted to look at what is the next step, right? Where are potential opportunities for new trails? We want to embrace things like the Metro Green Trail Corridor Plan, which ultimately creates a fabric of trails across the entire metro area, positioning Bonner Springs in a way that we can support that in the future. So as the Metro Green Trail System comes online, we want to have places like Front Street and the riverfront positioned so that they can connect to those trails. These trails would go into places like Shawnee, they would move up into the metro itself, up into KCK, et cetera. And last but not least, looking at the riverfront park. This is, I think, everybody's kind of favorite area to focus on during the process, so we got lots of cool ideas and we were able to be a little creative on the front end here to understand what is the programming and what are the opportunities that exist. I want to frame this a little bit with some of the site constraints that we leveraged to arrive at this design that you see on the screen. So first and foremost, we wanted to understand what were barriers to development, right? And some of those barriers are land ownership, obviously. So we wanted to take a look, and this was kind of an internal constraint that was put on the design team after we had some conversations during the beginning part of the program, and understand where are city-owned properties that could be viable for development. And so the city owns roughly, I think, 24 acres right up in this area. This is the K-7 Bridge Crossing there, and this would ultimately remove conflicts with private property. The next thing we wanted to understand is, you know, where are conflicting uses, right? So we started to talk and look at like what's happening on this site. We know that we have an old water treatment facility here, we know that there's a shooting range in existence, you know, what would the vision be if none of those things existed and this was a clean slate? So you have a concept plan like this, and we started to develop a program around this parcel. So you have a destination playground in the middle there, kind of the core focus. We leverage the existing crossing that exists. Ultimately, that would need to be signalized and improved in order to facilitate additional traffic into the site, increasing or proposing parking to facilitate this entire concept. So once people, if they choose not to walk, they can drive and we accommodate them there. An overlook and boardwalk opportunity to really engage people with the riverfront. One of the things that came out of our early steering committee and stakeholder meetings was that the goal was not to clear-cut the riverfront, right? We don't want to come in and knock down all the trees and make this a grass lawn park. The vision was really to try to embrace the existing space and understand how we could tuck this into the riverfront. And so these overlooks and boardwalks really give you the opportunity to have an elevated view out over the river without necessarily needing to, you know, grade accessible trails and things like that down to the water's edge, which would ultimately disturb this site quite a bit. In the middle there, you see a flexible event lawn and some shelters that are adjacent with the opportunity to engage beneath the K-7 Bridge. So this was one of our initial concepts. And from here, we had a conversation with the Union Pacific Railroad, and one of the biggest site constraints on the property or on the riverfront itself came to light. So this map is what is referred to as the highlighter map, their words. So this identifies all of the railroad right-of-way as it exists today along the Kansas River adjacent to the city of Bonner Springs. Within this right-of-way, we were denied any linear encroachment, so the idea of having a riverfront trail on the riverfront itself was denied. The idea of bringing people into the space to move horizontally inside of that yellow band was denied. And then ultimately, we're still waiting response back to understand the implications of a grade-separated crossing that could potentially spur into an overlook or the use of this space, anything in the yellow for parking. So as you can imagine, that slightly changed the way that we approached this because there was a pretty significant constraint put onto the site. So the next step in the process was understanding how we could fit the program that we had identified into the community-owned property outside of the Union Pacific right-of-way. So these sketches were kind of our pass at that, some of our process to get to where we ultimately ended up. And you can see the right-of-way identified there on that top sketch and how we started to push and pull and kind of shrink things and move that program around, start to compress some of the ideas and marry them up so that we could still get the same idea of program, but we do it in a way that respects those property boundaries and respects the existing right-of-way constraints. Then we had some continuing conversations with the city and understanding the existing police shooting range that's onsite, and understanding what some of those concerns might be as we start to improve that space, right? So if we were to decommission the range, what happens? The next step would be ultimately an environmental assessment. So because that was kind of falls outside of the scope of this planning project, we wanted to be respectful of the fact that it's a significant barrier to development, so we wanted to come up with an idea that respected what could potentially be there once that shooting range was uncovered, if you will, right? We don't know what's in the soil, we know that there will be lead, so that's a potential barrier to development with soil contamination. So even if the range were to relocate to a different property, which had been talked about, there's a significant environmental constraint directly adjacent to this property. Because of that, the design team shifted gears slightly, and we decided to look at how we could shift this program and fit the same program on the site with a slightly smaller footprint yet again. And so you can see that the concept shifted upriver, if you will. The parking flipped to the opposite side there, and ultimately, the layout of the plan started to shift. We oriented the park around this kind of central node, this outdoor lawn experience, and really embraced that underbridge experience to see how we could activate that as a multi-use area of the park. So we talked about everything from splash pads and urban plazas with light shows to, you know, skating rinks in the winter. There's so many opportunities that could happen there. You could turn the water pad or the splash pad off and activate that space with food trucks and things like that. So it really became a vibrant park, it just took a slightly different feel, and ultimately, this footprint allows us to avoid all of those primary constraints to development. Then became our robust public engagement timeline. So this is when we really reached out to the community to start to understand, okay, here's a feasible project, what are the next steps, and what is it that the city of Bonner Springs really desires in some of these improvements? So when you want to think about a riverfront park, what are the program elements? What do they look like? When you think about downtown, what are some of those activations that can really start to create that sense of place in downtown? Trails and connectivity, where are some of the missing links? You know, as someone who lives in the community, they're going to have a unique perspective that we may not see as designers coming out and looking at it, you know, on foot or through a windshield, looking at the GIS data. It's really important to get those local perspectives from the folks that are pushing wheelchairs or strollers or walking to school. Where are those missing opportunities? And so this was a really unique opportunity to kind of get that engagement, and we did it in a few different ways. So February 20th, we went to the high school basketball game, we set up a table, we had these big boards and we talked about the idea, we did some dot polling, excuse me, dot polling, so folks were able to vote directly on some of the aesthetics they liked. Do they like classic? Do they like modern? Things like that. Next, we went to the library. In March, we had an open house there. Slightly different demographic of folks, as you can imagine. We got a different cross-section of the community to provide some feedback and engagement. Next, City Hall, we had an open house right over here. It was great. Another slightly different demographic of folks in the community that came out to that. Last but not least, we went to the Chamber of Commerce lunch, and we were able to present to some business owners in downtown and get even some broader perspectives. On April 5th, we closed the community survey with almost 500 responses on there. So in that document that was sent out, the bigger one, in the appendix of the document, you actually see that raw data. If you want to dig into it a little bit more details, all those responses are right there and open for everyone to see. What did we hear? So we had two different forms of public engagement. We had open public engagement, and we had steering and stakeholder committees that were established by the city. So during the committees, we heard a lot about retaining the historic identity and character, understanding how a unified furnishing palette might start to look in downtown when you arrive downtown. It's that sense of place that you get when you see all the bike racks are the same and the benches, and it's that kind of unified vision. Understanding that, providing a gateway element, a sense of arrival, that sense of place, improving street parking. Street parking was one of the things we heard quite a bit with some of the developments that are coming online. There's some concern about what's going to happen with street parking and the overall quantity of parking in downtown. Due to the public nature of the plan, we wanted to focus on community assets, so the street parking infrastructure is where we focus our efforts there. And then ultimately, improving and providing additional crossings, both internal to downtown and to the riverfront. Front Street themes, we started to think about things like providing bike infrastructure, connecting those downtowns that are adjacent, connecting those neighborhoods that are adjacent to downtown, connecting Front Street to that future Metro Green Plan. Once we realized that the riverfront trail itself was kind of a nonstarter with Union Pacific, how can Front Street start to take over that and carry that load and become this kind of multimodal corridor that will connect to that longer-term vision? Ultimately, we need to consider maintenance. Everything that goes in on day one and looks beautiful comes with a long-term maintenance consideration, so understanding how to right-size infrastructure. If a sidewalk that's six feet wide can accommodate the use, do we need a 12-foot trail, right? So we needed to audit that and understand. Riverfront Park, again, providing access in general to the riverfront was one of the key themes that came out of that, and making this a place for all ages. It wasn't just a destination playground. It needed to be something that would serve the community in all, across all spectrums, right? So little kids, older folks, families, single folks, et cetera. We needed to accommodate all of that. And then we needed to consider some of those things like the brownfield remediation that we talked about, and how we get across Front Street into the park. Looking at what we heard from the public, this is a lot of data, I apologize for the scale, we had to try to fit it in there in summary form, but in general, we heard that we needed to retain that historic aesthetic again. Classic vibes were definitely the preference with the gateway as well as the downtown furnishings. And then on the riverfront, we actually started to see a direction skewed towards nature-based, towards nature play as well as nature education. So beyond just the playground, understanding how you might be able to program some of these elements to teach people about riparian corridors, teach people about what's happening in the space, we could even have a story about the brownfield, for example. And that brought us to the final vision plan, which you see on the screen here. Now, this is slightly cropped, the trails extend beyond this view, but for clarity purposes, we wanted to show kind of the three core areas here, and then the trail plan actually extends beyond this. So you have downtown, Front Street, and the riverfront park. Looking at those trails at the largest scale here, you can see the things identified in green are actually trails that were identified by the community as key improvements. So Morse Avenue, those connections there, understanding along Metropolitan, how we can start to infill some of those gaps, 138th Street all the way up to Kansas Avenue. We got very detailed and explicit information from the community survey about how some of these different elements might start to impact the community and how they're all positive benefits to the community. One of the kind of key little nuggets, I feel like most plans have those like little moments where it's like this smallish piece can really kind of unlock the key. You see what we've identified there is like that bluegrass trail. That's actually a connection from an existing neighborhood over to the school. It doesn't exist today, and kids are moving through the woods there on foot and cutting their own trail. And so a little connection like that, it's probably the smallest trail connection identified, but a little connection like that really connects the community internally. So next, we'll talk a little bit about downtown. You can see a lot of those kind of core fundamentals that we talked about earlier are still there. We wanted to infill the tree network with some proposed trees, some additional street trees there, connect small portions of sidewalk that are missing today, understand where those crossing opportunities exist and make sure that we show those crossings. So we have some new sidewalks, new crossings, and then we wanted to identify what's happening from a future perspective. So, you know, some of the, at the time, were future improvements, and now you can see they're in place and beautiful, the future farmer's market, for example, right? So identifying where that infrastructure is going to happen, future development opportunities, that sort of thing, and then make sure that the sidewalk fabric responds to it so that folks can enjoy downtown. We've identified some improved landscaping and ultimately organized the street parking in a way that we have bumpouts and stripe stalls to increase efficiency. That increase in efficiency is going to result in a net gain of about 50 street parking stalls over what's out there today, and so it helps to kind of organize that street so folks understand where they're supposed to be, where they're supposed to park. Everybody's been downtown and you see a car that's like eight feet from the car in front of it and you lose a stall, so trying to organize those things to help increase efficiency. This is a concept rendering, just a sketch, of what that gateway idea might look like. This is not a final design. This is simply vision. We're just saying, this is the opportunity here on Cedar to bring some of the classic gateway experience into downtown to give that sense of arrival. In the foreground, you can see the idea of this Wheels and Heels multimodal flexible trail. This would be a 12-foot wide trail that would allow folks to both walk and bike up and down Front Street along and adjacent to downtown. Looking at Front Street. Front Street has some pretty significant infrastructural impacts, especially when you think about it being a K-32 highway corridor, some K-dots involved. Ultimately, what that led us towards is zoning it in different improvement chunks, and each of these has their own sort of vision, if you will. So from A, where you go under the K-7 Bridge, to the B section that really kind of moves you up through most of the developed portions of downtown, C and D that start to take you out to the south and connect to some of the development that's happening down there. Here's an example of what those sections might look like. We pulled Section B and Section C as they have kind of the most dramatically different a feel to them, if you will. So Section B is along the K-dot corridor as it moves across downtown or moves into downtown, and you can see, because it is K-dot, ultimately, there will be some development coordination that has to happen there. Our engineering partners were able to do a vehicular load assessment on the corridor and understand where we were able to reduce lane width, where we were able to maybe reduce the number of lanes, things like that, based on the existing traffic counts today. And so what we were able to do is look at the K-32 corridor with a majority of the truck traffic. We kept that largely the same. We cleaned up and organized a little bit of the right-of-way, established the planting buffer there that you see, the five-foot tree lawn, and then ultimately, a 12-foot shared-use path. This 12-foot shared-use path will allow you to connect to that future Metro Green Trail System with both Wheels and Heels, so cyclists that are doing regional, you know, cross-country riding, if you will, or pedestrians that may be walking from their neighborhood down to the farmer's market will be able to leverage that infrastructure. In Section C, you actually see a lane reduction. Now, this is once we move outside of that K-dot corridor and this becomes a Bonner Springs roadway again. Based on the existing traffic loads, our engineering team was confident that we could actually reduce, based on design standards, we could actually reduce the number of lanes there. So what we did was, we pulled one of those lanes out and dedicated it back to the pedestrians' section of the right-of-way, and then we kept two lanes, one in each direction, with a dedicated turn lane. So that alleviates congestion when folks are turning at all of those entrances that you get to downtown and those developments. What this allows us to do is, when you think about places like Dairy Queen, some of the future development that's coming online, we actually, in addition to that 12-foot shared-use path, now have a seven-foot amenity zone. So that's where things like bike racks, trailheads, benches, that sort of thing can start to pop up. Next, looking at the riverfront park itself, this is that final vision. You can see a lot of similarities to the last concept sketch. We've got this large destination playground anchored by an event lawn. That event lawn is really set up in a way that it can really position itself to serve the destination playground, you know, on a Wednesday position itself to serve the destination playground, you know, on a Wednesday afternoon when there's a lot of families out there playing. People can be in that event lawn watching their children. Maybe on a Friday night, you could have a concert series in the park, and that event lawn becomes the stage for that. You've got sculptural seating on the south side. If you were to rent that shelter out for a, you know, family reunion or wedding or a speaker series or something like that, that sculptural seating starts to position itself so it can serve the playground and serve the event lawn and serve the event shelter as well. And then, you keep that overlooking boardwalk element, giving you a little bit of a promenade view protruding out over the river corridor so that you can get views out to the south. Underneath the K-7 corridor bridge there, you see an opportunity for a splash pad with night lighting. That's something that can be activated. It's a very urban condition. It feels very urban when you're underneath that bridge. It's something that happens in the Pacific Northwest quite a bit. They get a lot of rain, right? And so, they activate those spaces that are inherently sheltered. So, similar principle. We have very tight spatial constraints here. We heard that through our discovery and analysis. So, understanding how we can leverage every kind of ounce of this space for what it's worth. And so, below there, we've got that opportunity that becomes kind of a flexible plaza. A lot of the feedback that you'll read, you saw things like food trucks, for example. You can turn the splash pad off, activate that as an, you know, an outdoor beer garden, if you will, so that folks can come there and have events and community enjoyment. The vertical climbing and playground component. This is something that we incorporated in addition to the destination playground to provide kind of that multi-season experience when it is raining, that sort of thing. It provides an additional activation to the space underneath the bridge, and it's something that creates a dynamic component. So, if you're in the event lawn and maybe you want to do movie nights in the lawn, you can actually hang a screen on that vertical playground and turn it into a giant movie theater and have kind of an outdoor event space there as well. The kayak launch is another thing that was really sought after from a community perspective. Folks want to engage with the river. Bonner Springs has a history of it. During one of our public engagement opportunities, we were actually told a story. I think it was the turn of the century, some kids actually canoed from Bonner all the way to New Orleans. So, there's some cool historical precedent. And it's an opportunity to really engage with the Kansas River Corridor and have some recreational opportunity there. Taking a look at what some of that might look like in some quick vignette sketches here, you can see that vertical playground component on the left there, what it might look like if it's activated as an outdoor movie theater or a screen. And then, here's a slightly different view, a perspective of the park itself to kind of understand the scale and how some of those spaces relate to each other. Next steps, funding. So, what we needed to do is figure out, okay, we understand what the vision is now. How do we implement it? So, we took a look at a lot of different funding sources. You can see from private entities like T-Mobile all the way through, you know, very public things like the, you know, Kansas Railroad Crossing Program. They'll reimburse you, I believe it's $150,000 for improving crossings, right? So, there's opportunities for funding sources out there, and so we wanted to understand what those improvement opportunities are. And those are continuing to increase almost daily, it seems. There's actually a new infrastructure hub with the state of Kansas that will start to reimburse federal matches. So, if it's an infrastructure-based improvement, there's an opportunity as a Kansas community to really engage with some of those federal dollars as well. Looking at the grant funding timeline, one of the important components is now that this vision plan is in place, this is really the tool, you know, the ammunition, if you will, to move forward and look at some of these grant programs. The grants want to know that you're serious, right? So, they want to see that there's been a little bit of involvement and engagement. And so, this whole process is really geared to set you up for success when you start to think about some of these grants. And timing is important on those. So, understanding when these grants are available, when the timelines happen, and when those applications need to be prepared is kind of that first step. And then, implementation, right? So, we're here in the top left with the Bonner Springs Downtown Master Plan. What comes next? So, potential first step would be additional planning studies and grant pursuits. So, for some of these elements that we know are outside of the general budget, this is where you start to apply for, you know, outside funding, bringing money into the community to start to pay for some of those things. The ones we've identified are like the Riverfront Park, for example. That would be an RFP for design to understand some of those implications, right? The next step is to dig into that pretty deeply and understand, you know, how do we deal with things like environmental assessments? How do we deal with the Corps of Engineers? What does that look like at an absolute detailed level? An environmental study for the shooting range, for example, would be a component for a future study. The Front Street Corridor RFP, that would be an opportunity there to engage with K-dot and really design that corridor in detail, right? So, these are all additional funding and planning grant opportunities that would need to be pursued. And then, down below, you see direct implementation. These are elements that really fall into those categories that are generally included in capital improvement funding, right? So, this is like sidewalk infill projects on 138th Street and Morse Avenue, where we have identified some of those low-hanging fruit, where there may be a gap in the sidewalk that's a block long, things like that. If you infill that, you're starting to create that connectivity within the community. So, there's kind of two paths forward. And then, down below, we started to look at prioritizing projects. What does this mean? Really, understanding that dollars are dollars, right? And everything has a budget. And so, if you were to kind of bite off pieces of this plan, you know, or when Mark and his team start to open this in the future and they say, what should we look at first? This is kind of a good guideline for what we feel would be kind of those priorities. So, we set them up in one-to-five-year chunks. So, you have priority projects that are, fall inside that one-to-five year, and then you have visionary projects that fall beyond five years. So, priority projects from trails perspective, things like the bluegrass trail, that connection to the high school, 138th Street pedestrian improvements, a lot of those start to be infilled. There's already construction happening on that corridor, so just continuing to connect some of those links in the chain, if you will. And then, downtown, looking at furnishing updates, the city actually qualifies for programs like, I believe it's Green Bush, which is a state funding program. So, a lot of these furnishing companies, they have to provide you with a flat rate that is a discounted rate to implement some of these furnishing-type things. So, you know, furnishing improvements, wayfinding signage, that outdoor dining program, how do we start to activate the streetscape? That could be kind of one-to-five-year vision for the downtown. And then, ultimately, Front Street, because of the infrastructure cost, we're anticipating that almost all of those sections or all of those sections will likely be in that five-plus-year range by the time you get through permitting, understanding the budgets. You're talking about some pretty heavy infrastructure improvements there. And so, we've actually ranked those, you see that the order looks a little odd, but we've actually ranked them based on impact to downtown. And so, B2 would be the most impactful to the direct downtown, and then C, D, B1, and A actually start to radiate out from downtown. So, we would promote that they go in that order for maximum impact. And then, last but not least, the Riverfront Park would be one of those visionary projects because it does include several stakeholders. Union Pacific, the Corps of Engineers, the Police Department, and then ultimately the design process that goes into something like that, it's probably the largest budget item on the screen. So, understanding what that process looks like, how we assemble funding, and then next steps from there. Included in the broader document are some high-order of magnitude cost opinions on what some of these things might cost today. And then, ultimately, looking, you know, with inflation, as you move down the road, those prices increase, so that data's in there as well. With that, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a long presentation, but it was very insightful. Does anybody would like to ask any questions at all? Do you want me to go in order, or? Go ahead. I thought you had something. I'll ask a few things. The, when I saw the vision of a potential walkway along the railroad, my first thought was, I like that, but... And I had to go through the, quite a bit to find the, where you actually had your interaction with the railroad, and they were not very positive. Did they give you any feedback on reasonings why they were denying it, or is it just a flat-out denial and don't ask us any more?
Yeah. So, a little bit of backstory on that. The railroad itself actually outsources community engagement now. So, you deal with a law firm, I believe ours was in Arkansas, that was the liaison for this region. So, you go through them, and they're former railroad employees that did community outreach for the railroad before the outreach. We presented to them, just like we presented to you today. They actually really enjoyed it. There was a lot of positive feedback, a lot of positive commentary about engagement. You can see there's new crossings up in Edwardsville, for example, like there's some activity along this corridor already. So, there was some real positive energy in that meeting. Ultimately, what they do then, their responsibility is to, and I don't want to speak for them, but this is what was communicated to us, they take that idea back to the railroad proper, present it to the folks that are overseeing this area, and ultimately get a ruling on it. Their ruling was that they won't allow linear encroachment, and we didn't really receive any additional elaboration on that ruling. It was just no and refer to the development guidelines. So, the development guidelines state separated crossings, no linear encroachment. We actually inquired if they were willing to entertain the idea of right-of-way acquisition or maybe an easement, for example, like can we do an easement inside of your easement? This is a trail. We'll set it off 20 feet, whatever it might be. They weren't open to that. They said that's not within their operating procedures right now. So, unfortunately, I don't have a ton of elaboration and feedback on that. It was more of a kind of a no and move on. So...
They didn't sound like they necessarily completely slammed the door.
Right.
It came pretty close to it, but...
Pretty close, but not completely. And so, that's why the design started to shift away from, you know, like the linear trail and the crossing that went to a promenade and kind of the engagement on the actual, like, Cedar, you know, like if you were to come down out of downtown onto the riverfront, all of that falls inside of that right-of-way. So, you started to see a shift in the improvements up to the area that's Bonner Springs property, but not inside of that right-of-way. And so, there's a little kind of pinnet-shaped property up there, and that's where the ultimate focus of the improvements is. Because we can cross the railroad perpendicular, but we have to land on ground that's not inside of that right-of-way.
And then, for the, you were talking about the access to the park, since there isn't that grade crossing there.
Correct.
I would assume, I don't know how, if your study went any further as far as to understand what might need to be there for traffic control, because I would assume that it's going to have to be a controlled intersection there or something.
Yes, yeah, 100%. So, that actually now triggers two jurisdictions. So, you've got the Union Pacific with the crossing, but you've got K-dot with traffic control, right? And so, while our scope didn't fully engage in a traffic study with K-dot, our engineering team was able to look at the traffic lows, kind of understand some of the standards and the regulations and say, yep, that's a feasible opportunity. And so, as part of that kind of next level of design then, it would be to establish communication with K-dot around that traffic intersection. And then, ultimately, understanding based on Union Pacific guidelines, what that improved crossing is going to be. So, that's going to be signalized. It'll have gates, it'll have the lights, the whole bit.
I assume it'll have to have a separate crossing for pedestrians on top of it.
Yeah, correct, correct, yep. And that'll go through a similar process to what we went through, but it'll be a community development. I can't remember the exact name for the program, but it's similar. Edwardsville, I think, just did it with their crossing downtown, so, or, well, in their community. And they actually referenced that when we met with Union Pacific. They actually pulled up pictures of it and showed us. So, I would say, yeah, that's the next step. And then, as that development or that design comes online, engaging with those entities to kind of refine those improvements.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any additional questions? Mike?
On the right-of-way?
Yeah.
If you did it, it would have to land outside.
Yeah, so ideally, based on their feedback, it would land, if you were to land and get off of it, you would need to be on land outside of the right-of-way. And so, you actually saw, I could flip back, in one of those quick concept sketches, you know, on the bottom left, it was the idea of you could come in here with your bicycle, go up, over, and back down, probably an elevator, right? Land on a linear trail and then recreate both directions. Once they began to start to provide us feedback on that linear encroachment, the concept on the top there actually just has footings that go down. So, that's not actually bringing people into their right-of-way, so that would have to be a more advanced discussion with them about, you know, hey, we can grade-separate and then have this activity that happens over the top. So, we didn't get cut-and-dry clarity on that. It was a future question that we asked, and we haven't received direct feedback on whether this promenade overlook idea is feasible. Ultimately, we went away from it in the final vision just because of expense. We could take people there, but there's really nowhere else to go from there, so...
So, in your opinion, given that you've dissected about every inch of Bonner Springs, both sides of the railroad track, what stands out? Because I think of three different things. Aesthetics, right, logistics, maneuverability, with your walking trails and stuff like that, so... And there was a lot of information that we have to go through, but just kind of put you on the spot for a moment. The archway seems like that would be advantageous, right? Because that's exposure for our town. Somebody rides the wow factor.
Absolutely.
Right, and then, if you're looking to move into Bonner Springs, right, you can Google things and like, wow, they got all these cool trails and stuff like that. So, maybe we, maybe we focus on this side of the tracks and kind of, right, create the convenience, the trails and so forth. And then, the other side would be like a Plan B, just, you know, not really having, haven't had a chance to look at everything. I'm sorry, we just got a lot of this information.
Yeah, yeah.
At any rate, so what, in your opinion, what would you say the first thing we should do?
So, the first thing I would say is, well, it's kind of a two-part. I think you're right on. When you start to think about the impact of trail systems and corridors and what the impact that they'll have on the community, what we noticed in the public engagement is that there's a vibrant, active community in cycling, running, parents and kids that like to move on foot through the community and through the neighborhoods. And while they may feel safe in some of the neighborhood streets, that safety doesn't necessarily translate to places like obviously Front Street, but even some of the corridors or intersections as you move into downtown, right? So, improving those overall trail systems as a priority, I think, is going to have a lot of impact on the community from a functional standpoint. And it's not only, you know, recreation. You know, we did hear from recreation folks that said like, yeah, if you just put this little spear, then I can run like a five-mile loop, and it's perfect, right? And that's huge. But it's also impactful to families who want to walk to the farmer's market and things like that. So, I would say trail improvements from a safety perspective should be something to be prioritized, absolutely. The Riverfront Park, while I think the spirit of Bonner Springs is there, that's what people want. The development implications of something like that from a monetary perspective really do place it into that kind of visionary goal or aspiration, right? And so, to your point, it may make more sense to focus on, you know, downtown vision, right? The gateway, that arrival experience, it starts to compound on the new farmer's market. If you, I actually drove through that intersection tonight. As you pull in, if you were to think there's this gateway and behind it unfolds the farmer's market, it starts to set the stage and create this real vision or sense of place, right? And that's one of the primary focuses of this plan. And so, I would say, yeah, the gateway would be a priority. The trails would probably be priority number two. And then, implementing some of those, you know, they're maybe less flashy, but things like a standardized set of furnishings for bikes, bike racks, trash receptacles, benches, that sort of thing, that really does, as you move into certain communities, you'll see that. And you start to feel it, and you don't necessarily know you feel it, but it's a branding thing, right? All the light posts are the same, the trash cans are the same, and all of a sudden, you know you're in a place, right? This is downtown, and it's a district. And so, some of those subtle things like that really start to create the sense of place, and I think will achieve the goals of focusing that energy. Kind of building on the existing pride that's already there.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Anybody else? Seeing nothing else? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Wonderful presentation, and hopefully it goes that well come next week when you, is it next week, from the Planning Department?
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate your time.
We will move that full document to the Planning Commission next month, or this, next week, sorry.
And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the citizens' concerns. And this is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on any issues with the interest affair and transparent government. This is for time to speak for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If, I would more than welcome you to the microphone. Go ahead and turn your mic on there, Roger. No, turn it on. Hit the little button on the bottom, it'll go green. On the very front of the mic, ah, Mr. Granite will take help you there.
Green means gold.
That's right. Now you can go.
My name is Roger Miller. I am here as a representative of the Wyandotte County Historical Society as a past president and board member. We are proposing that the unified government change the name of the Wyandotte County Park to the Lauren Taylor Park. Several reasons. Several reasons. One, we would like to honor Lauren Taylor, Mr. History of Wyandotte County. He's a local attorney, passed away last year. But he's a local attorney who all his life has been a historian par excellence. He was on the State Historical Society, et cetera, et cetera. But mostly, he was a publisher and writer. He compiled and published the Wyandotte County Historical Journal, quarterly journal for over 20 years, compiling different stories about everything. The first thing he published was the ethnic communities of Wyandotte County. He got our diversified county, all the ethnic communities to write about their history, and he put it together in, in a book like this. Then he came out and wanted the historic communities of Wyandotte County. And so Bonner Springs is adequately, I think, represented by a nice section of it that was put together by Connie Harrington, Elamay Mitchell, Larry Bergen, and myself. So he also, in his spare time, I guess it is, because I can imagine sitting at the computer hour after hour, putting all this together, which he, he did. Then he came out with a historical overview of the historic sites in Wyandotte County. So for that reason, and the fact that he devoted all of his spare time and life to, to the Historical Society, we're proposing to the county government that the name be changed. So we are here tonight to ask if you would approve that, that you take a vote, I guess, yes or no? If you approve it, I'd like a letter to that effect. I can pick it up and take it to our meeting, but that's what we're looking for. We also have the support of our local Bonner Springs Historic Preservation Society, the Rotary Club, and that's what we're doing, gathering support. So that's what I'm here for.
Great question. When are you planning on approaching the UG about?
Planning on what?
Approaching the UG about?
I do not know, because we're still gathering.
Okay. What I would do, what I would do is ask you to talk to our city clerk, municipal clerk, Chris Brake, and maybe we can put together potentially a resolution of support that can come in front of the council and they can vote on it possibly at our next meeting.
More official.
Make them official.
Alright. I'll just wait to hear from Chris then. So thank you for hearing me. Any questions?
Yeah, you can ask, simple question, yeah.
Simple question. Why did you choose Wyandotte County Park?
I'm sorry, what?
Why did you choose Wyandotte County Park specifically?
Why did we choose it?
You wanted to rename the park, why that?
Well, first, because the museum's in the park. Because actually, there's a, I think, still confusion between Wyandotte County Lake Park and Wyandotte County Park. They'll not, you know, where's the museum? Is it up by the lake? No, no, they're two different parks. So we just thought because the museum's there and, you know, themological.
Roger, thank you very much.
Alrighty.
And well, you can wait for Chris to get in contact with you. Is there anyone else who would like to? We got a couple people, someone for once. I don't know if they're trying to be polite, or if neither one really wants to come up and talk.
Hi, Leandra Johnson, 138 South Middleton. Recently, there's been a lot of discussion about the performance of invocation to open city council meetings. When I've expressed my opinion that it's not an inclusive practice and paints an image of Bonner Springs as backwards, out of step, and intolerant, I've been told repeatedly that while that may be the case, it's best not to borrow trouble or rock the boat, and besides, no one's actually complained. In a diverse population, in a country founded on a freedom to worship or not, as one chooses, prayer of any kind does not belong in government meetings. Yes, I know precedents and case law can be quoted all day long about why it's not illegal, but not illegal is not equal right. Within the 16 square miles of Bonner Springs, there are more than 25 different houses of worship. I don't think anyone would argue that there's a shortage of non-government public spaces where citizens are welcome to gather, worship, and express their faith in whatever matter they choose. City government is not sexy or exciting, and it's a challenge to get our community excited to participate in the granular work of governing ourselves. So why would we continue a practice that might be seen as exclusionary or alienating to even one citizen? Because no one's actually complained? Well, this is me complaining.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else who'd like to approach and talk to, approach the council? Name and address, please.
Afternoon, my name's Brian Zesker. I'm currently running for the state senate, District Nine. This is part of the new district. I think it's kind of interesting that I'm following your new vis, vision. And as I've been to multiple city councils and looking, my third or second pillar focuses on our community heroes. And as you're trying to build your community, and we need to focus on, you know, our police, our fire, and our education, as well as, those are what's going to build your community, as well as your parks and every, everything you're building there. So I wanted to step up here before my wife comes up here and introduces herself that I'm running for the state senate. Been here a couple times, just kind of looking at what's going on. Questions?
Seeing none? Thank you, Brian. Do we have a question?
Hi, good evening. I'm Gina Montebano Zeseger. Dr. Montebano, I retired out of Missouri in, out of education. And I am running for the state board of education for District Four, which includes Bonner Springs and 27 other school districts within the state. So I'm here to just share a little bit about who I am and why education is so important to me. My career, obviously, was near and dear to my heart, that education is the cornerstone to all of what happens, one piece of the puzzle to what you were even discussing tonight. The little nugget that he shared of, you know, the students who are using and building their own trail bridge to connectivity, our schools are that connectivity. So fully funding education and special education and helping our schools be the cornerstone of our communities is near and dear to my heart. So I will have a primary August 6th, and I ask for you to look for my name, Gina Montebano Zeseger.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the council, talk to council? Seeing no one else, we will move on to our consent agenda. And tonight, we have the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 city council meeting, claim for city operations, and a public use request for TIBLO trot. Is there anything the staff wishes to have polled? Any residents would like to have anything polled? Counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Long. Vote please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto new business. The next four items are all connected, so we're going to start out with a public hearing for a development plan and establishment of a reinvestment housing incentive district for 120 on Oak Apartments. We'll need a motion to open the public hearing at, let's see, 8:30? 8:35?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open the public hearing at 8:35 to consider the request to review the development plan and establish the district for 120 Oak Apartments, RHID.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Gurley. All of a sudden, I lost my train of thought. Go ahead, and I will call for the vote on that.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Okay, staff is, are they going to make a presentation, I assume?
Not so much a presentation. Megan Gilley and your economic development coordinator, but we have placed all of the documents in the agenda for you to consider for this project. Obviously, the public hearing is to review the development plan and the establishment of an RID, or RHID at 120 Oak Apartments, or more commonly, sometimes referred to as the old Thriftway lot. Bond counsel is in the audience, as well as the developer, for you to ask questions.
Any other staff input or pilot, would you like to speak?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tyler Ellsworth with the Cutac Rock Law Firm, the city's bond counsel. Just to put a little bit of detail to the comments that Megan just made, the purpose of the public hearing is to consider the RHID development plan. And so the next item on your agenda is an ordinance approving the RHID, approving the development plan, and approving a development agreement that outlines what the developer has to do to perform so that the city will provide access to RHID property tax increment. And so the purpose of this hearing is to discuss the RHID development plan. There are various components to that, but just in brief, the plan lays out the public improvements and the housing improvements that are going into this new district. And it also looks at the tax revenues that are anticipated to be generated in the district over what in this case is a 20-year term. By statute, we can go up to 25 years. In this case, we've agreed to limit the term to 20 years. So because this is an existing site served by existing infrastructure, there's not a lot of public improvements that need to be made. Normally, RHID is used for public improvements, infrastructure, utility extensions, things like that. The Act also allows the RHID tax increment to be used to reimburse the developer's vertical construction costs, and that's what we're proposing to do here. So I wanted to make that point clear. There is a cap of around $6.7 million that the developer will be entitled to be reimbursed over potentially a 20-year term. Whether it's $6.7 million that's reimbursed first, or whether it's that 20-year duration, that 20-year term that happens first, those are both limits on what the developer collects here, but that's another piece of this plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions. We'll walk through sort of the rest of the proceedings as they appear on your agenda.
Thank you, Tyler. Would the developer like to come up and speak at all about the plan at all?
Good evening, Chad Schimke, one of a handful of the development team, but happy to answer any questions. I know we've had many discussions over time. This has been obviously a long time in the works. I think, you know, one clarifying point I'd maybe make just to follow up on Tyler's piece is, the state program is to, you know, help, help to, I don't know if you want to say mitigate risk necessarily, but, you know, the reality is, any of these development projects do come with risk when you're faced with some amount of unknown property tax increases, right? Being a property owner of several in Bonner Springs, it seems every year I'm experiencing anywhere between 10 and 20% increases. So, you know, when you try to create a pro forma that has to last, you have to understand what those implications are going to be, because you can't, you know, increase rents 10 and 20% a year to try to offset all of those. So I think just the distinction I was going to make on, on Tyler's piece is, a, a reimbursement is a reduction in what's ultimately going to be paid, incrementally paid. So the analogy I use all the time is if, if I, if I gave you $100 and you gave me back 75, I still spent 25. I didn't, I didn't make 25. You have to think about where it originates. So I think the abatement piece is, is, gets confused in reimbursement language from time to time, because you have to think of where it originates from, so. But anyway, we're happy to answer any questions we can for you.
Thank you, Chad. We might have some questions here in a little bit.
Sure.
I'm going to check now to see if anybody from the public would like to speak on the matter at all. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 8:40. No move.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Gurley. Roll call, please.
Blanks?
We'll ask him those here.
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now, onto the next piece of this. The ordinance to adopt a development plan establishing the district and approving a development agreement for the 120 on Oak Apartments, RHID. Is there any additional input from staff at this time?
Sure.
Would you like to add? Go right ahead.
Sure, so mayor.
Mr. Ellsworth?
This is, this is the formal council action that puts the RHID in place. And the district that we're talking about is just the parcel that formerly contained the Thriftway and will contain a new 93-unit apartment project with associated onsite parking. So that is the first of three things that this ordinance does. The second thing that the ordinance does is approves a development plan that we just discussed briefly in your public hearing. And the third thing that the ordinance does is it approves the development agreement between the city and the developer team here. The developer team does have that access to the additional tax revenues that are generated here over a 20-year term, but they have to meet certain performance requirements. So they have to complete the project in a certain amount of time, they have to pay their taxes, they have to maintain the project to a certain standard. And there are certain other pieces of the development agreement, sort of the broader terms of the business deal here. They're making some improvements to Kelly Murphy Park. There are some additional parking spaces that they have access to behind the Alden Harrington Funeral Home. Those different pieces are included in the development agreement, and the ordinance approves your signing and, and delivery of that agreement with the developer.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yeah.
So with that, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the reinvestment housing incentive district development, RHID plan, established an RHID within the city, and approving a development agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Blanks. And we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Shannon, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Ms. Blanks?
None.
Ms. Long, did you?
Yeah, there's a few things I want to talk about probably after we get this done, so, nothing yet.
So you didn't have anything? Yeah. Doesn't seem to be asking a whole lot of questions. I will, just wanted to check and just mention that, yes, it was a long, hard negotiation, and I'm glad we were able to hopefully maybe bring this to a finish line, depending on the vote by the council. Be nice to hopefully maybe see something occurring with that, that lot. So if there's no further questions or concerns, comments, I would, did you have some?
Well, at some point, and this may be it, I'd like to just get, be reassured that the things that we have seen on the plan, for instance, in the parking lot, that the aesthetics of that parking lot are going to remain, and we won't end up with just a bare asphalt square. We have some green areas in there, and I sure want to make sure that those stay for the aesthetics of the parking lot, as, as one thing. As well as the wall that's on the back of the property, make sure that somebody's going to do something with that, because it's unsightly as it is, and that needs a lot of improvement there. I realize there probably will have to be a wall there because of the street behind it, but surely something could be done to that wall to make it more appealing.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone else have anything? If you'd like to speak on that, Mr. Reeves?
Sure, Chad Schimke, I, I know that we worked really closely with the team on all of the landscaping requirements, so this proposal, I believe, actually began before some of the new requirements. some of the new requirements, and there's obviously been an evolution, right, of downtown code in regards to some of the, I think, screening and landscaping requirements. I think the only thing that, and I'd ask for anybody on the team to correct me, but the only thing that we had to find some middle ground on was maybe some of the medians to try to pick up some additional parking, just because we are so limited downtown. But there was no other issues or discussions around any of the landscaping, the trees, the screening, anything around the building itself, anything around the areas that may be, like where a dumpster may be placed, or something maybe less slightly, or less appealing. I think we're willing to have any of those, you know, discussions, but I don't know, is there anything, Mr. Lee, I might have missed there in regards to landscaping?
Their site plan has been approved with the landscaping and everything that you guys have seen, so that, that's the plan they're, they're held to at this time.
I just want to be reassured of that, because we've had some shortcomings on those kinds of things before.
I will make sure that they do. That's part of my job.
Thank you very much, sir.
Oh, you're very welcome. You're very welcome.
We've gone round and round on the parking issue. It's, I'm reading that there is a right to utilize space in the public parking lot. Are those spots going to be designated and held for residents, or are those strictly available to them first come, first served?
We went back and forth on exactly what level of detail to use to describe how that would work, and I think that there won't be specific designated spots within the public lot, but I think there will be signage, and I think that part of what the development agreement outlines is that, at your request, the developer team can provide tags or names of owners that might be parking their vehicles using those 27 spaces, so that you at least know who those vehicles are, if there's any question about that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would go ahead and ask for a vote.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, onto the third item of this whole process. It's onto developer agreement for the MIH ARPA grant for the 120 on Oak Apartments. Staff?
All right. So, this agenda item and the next agenda item relate to two additional incentives that are being used for the project. We just talked about the RHID incentive. The additional two incentives are a moderate income housing grant from the state of Kansas and sales tax industrial revenue bonds. So, this agenda item is approval of an MIH ARPA grant developer agreement between the city and the developer. You previously had before you and previously approved an agreement between the city and KHRC for an MIH grant for this project of $1.7 million to assist in the provision of moderate income housing opportunities in your community. This is a corresponding piece to that. So, the city has an agreement with KHRC. This agreement before you this evening is between the city and the developer regarding the disbursement of those grant funds.
Anything else from staff? Is there anybody from the public would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the developer agreement for MIH-ARPA grant for the 120 on Oak Apartments projected, project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. We'll start down here with you, Mr. Reeves, this time. Any questions, comments, concerns?
You have $1.7 million, and that's just the portion that's Bonner Springs taxes would be returned to them, correct?
I don't believe that it is specifically Bonner Springs taxes that are used. It's a state of Kansas program, and they have those grant funds available at the statewide level, and they designate.
I stand corrected.
Yeah.
Anything else? Long?
No questions.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions.
Mr. McMahon?
No.
Ms. Gurley?
Yep.
I have nothing else further to ask or comment on. So, with that, then, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then, onto item number four in this regard. Resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption for the 120 on Oak's apartment.
All right. So, this is the last of our agenda items for 120 Oak. The developer has requested a sales tax exemption through the use of industrial revenue bonds. You're familiar with these. We've done them on several other projects, both with property tax abatements and without property tax abatements. This has no associated property tax abatement. The sole purpose of the bonds is to provide a sales tax exemption on the construction materials and the equipment for this project. The item before you this evening is a resolution of intent. It allows a developer to obtain a sales tax exemption certificate that they will use through the construction period, and I anticipate that will be back before you, probably sometime in 2026, when the project nears completion to actually issue the bonds. The developer will purchase the bonds themselves. You're not using the bonds in this case as true financing, so there's really very little risk to the city, if any, but the bonds are the structure that state law allows to provide this sales tax exemption.
Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption for the 120 on Oak Apartments as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Ms. Long. We'll start here with you, Mr. McMahon.
No questions.
Ms. Gurley, Mr. Kip?
Nothing.
Ms. Blanks? Ms. Long?
No questions. Just thank you for both parties for all your work on this. I know it's been a long road.
Ms. Long?
Time limit on this is 20 years, is that right?
I'm not going to be here for 20 years.
We'll probably vote on it here pretty quick. You're talking about.
Yes, on RHID, the term is 20 years. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, not on, not on the sales tax exemption. The sales tax exemption is specific to the construction period, not after the construction period.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I would call for the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, Mr. Schimke, for all your hard work. I know it's, it's not been easy. It's been a tough haul, but do we have a date on when you're hoping to maybe start moving some earth?
Well, I want to thank your, your team. You guys have been great. The team's been awesome. It has been a long road, but a lot of hard work. I would imagine we'll have 60, 90 days. We'll, we'll start to see more activity. We'll have updates by then, but right now, we get to have really fascinating lender discussion.
So, this fall, it could be, we may be seeing some movement then, huh?
Hope so.
Well, thank you very much. So, with that, we will move on then to item number five. A memorandum of understanding with the Wyandotte Behavioral Health Network for 988 Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Billy and I, Chief of Police. Wyandotte Behavioral Health Network is a certified community behavioral health clinic in Kansas that provides comprehensive behavioral health services to Wyandotte County, which includes answering the 988 hotline for those in crisis, as well as suicide prevention. We met with Wyandotte Behavioral Health Network, and they have a desire to be the primary dispatching specialists for Bonner Springs. What we have before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding that would allow KCK dispatch to, on behalf of us, to accept those inbound calls as long as they meet certain criteria. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any additional staff input? Anyone from citizens would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to initiate an MOU with Wyandotte Behavioral Health Network for 988 Services within the city of Bonner Springs.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Blanks and a second by Mr. Reeves. We will start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
So, you said they send somebody?
Yes.
They dispatch, they do the dispatching and?
The, well, it's kind of a co-responder type of program. They generally handle most problems, so we don't have to. A police response is not always the best response, so they have some crisis hotline members that can hopefully get the resources available to those people that need them at that moment.
I think this is wonderful. Like you said, sometimes police presence always isn't the best presence in those situations, so I appreciate you partnering with them to bring services to our community.
Citizens can actually dial 988 and get their services.
Yes.
That's good.
Ms. Long?
I second that. It's great. Wonderful that you're using these resources. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
So, when they receive this phone call, the 988, right, a dispatcher would receive the phone call. So, they, they have to process a lot and determine whether they're going to send, like a social worker versus a police officer. Am I, am I right on that?
It has to meet certain criteria, otherwise it automatically goes to 911.
Okay.
911's never going to go away. Our response will never go away, but the, the goal of it is, those incidents that don't meet that threshold, you know, like weapons involved, maybe it's just somebody calling in because they're having a bad day and they just need to talk to somebody. They don't necessarily need a police officer to be engaged with. Sometimes that might escalate the situation, so we were really trying to.